We'll do a row call, please, and make sure your mics are on, please.
Paul Kaufman.
Here.
Susan Edmondson.
Here.
Ruth Johnson.
Here.
Ashley Jones.
Here.
Billy King.
Here.
Bill Lowe.
Here.
Kim York.
Here.
If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to see the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our mission statement is preparing each student for successful and meaningful life. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, moving on to recognitions.
Folks, over the last couple of months, we've been celebrating and recognizing the accomplishments of many of our students who are in the fall activities, and we have one more of those this evening that we want to recognize, and that's one of our student athletes from the volleyball program. The volleyball team had an extremely successful year this year. I believe they won over 20 games, if I remember correctly, and we have a student athlete with us this week that was named to the Class Four All-State Team, and so Janaye Thurston, please come forward. We also had intended to recognize her coach, but she is ill today, so she will not be here. We'll invite her back next month. She's been named as one of the 30 under 30 to watch by the National Volleyball Coaches Association, so we'll bring her forward. Thank you, Janaye, for being here. She plans to attend Arkansas Little Rock next year on a volleyball scholarship, and I want to thank her parents publicly for all their support through the Booster Club over the years. They've been stalwarts there. It seems like every activity I go to, it seems like they're around, so that's a great thing. We appreciate that support. And then last week, we had our Ray Peck Spelling Bee, big tradition here, and our winner is with us this evening. His name is Miles Salami, Selami, Selami. Close, okay. He is an eighth grader at East Middle School, so Miles, if you'll come forward. On March 13th, he will be representing Ray Peck in the Cass County Spelling Bee, so it'll be the next step in the process, and we want to wish him well at the Cass County Competition, which will be right here in this room on March 13th. All right, just for incentive, if you win that one, you're back here again, okay? All right? I want to thank our recognition, their families for being here, and friends and teammates for being here tonight. You're welcome to stay if you want, but you can leave if you'd like to as well, so thanks for being here.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Public comment.
No one signed up for tonight.
Okay. Next, we have our public hearing on our 2019-20 school calendar. Dr. Volker.
Good evening, everybody. So during our public hearing portion, I'll go through the process of calendar development and the calendar highlights before we ask for public comments in our public hearing portion. There will be an opportunity for questions during our action item portion of the agenda just a bit later on. So in our process, a subgroup of Team Ray Peck began the calendar development process by surveying parents, asking for input on important calendar topics. I'm going to show that parent survey in just a second. 619 parents completed the survey. With that input, the subgroup then developed draft calendars and asked both the Professional Development Committee and Team Ray Peck for additional input. The Parent Teacher Conference format was a big portion of our discussion, and we'll talk about it and how it's kind of ebbed and flowed and its development within the calendar in just a little bit. Two draft calendars were then shared with all the staff. For future information, our first draft calendar was called the reciprocal calendar because it, just like it says, it took this year's calendar and placed it on next year's calendar dates, so it was exactly the same in structure and format, basically. And then our calendar number two, which we'll talk about later, is the one we're showing you actually, is called the Split Parent Teacher Conference Calendar, and you'll see why it's called that in a little bit as well. So they were sent out to all Ray Moore Precious staff, and then input was then taken back to Team Ray Peck. Team Ray Peck considered all of that and all the information, and then Team Ray Peck votes on what is a final recommendation to take you, before you, the Board of Education. So we are looking at the actual calendar that was voted on by Team Ray Peck, and we'll talk about that process. So if we could change over and start by reviewing the parent survey briefly. That's the LEAP parent survey. That's okay. It's...oh, I thought we had that included on there.
Yeah, it's done on the action.
Oh, it's probably in the actual action portion.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I was like, I know it's on there. I checked it a couple times, and Opam put it on there as well. So looking at this, when you look at, the first question we asked was rank the following calendar topics in the order of importance, and it's very hard to read, but essentially that starts school later in the year, school out before Memorial Day, two full weeks of winter break, and a full week of spring break, and asked them to rank those by highest priority to lowest priority. I know it's kind of confusing when you look at the colored bars, but mathematically, when I looked at the numbers, the number one most important item for parents was being out before Memorial Day, which did make sense to me. They want to begin their summer, begin summer school, begin any sports camps, that made total sense. The second was the two weeks of winter break, the third was the full week of spring break, and the fourth priority, the lowest priority, was starting school later in August. That was less of a concern. I know with my own children, by that time, I'm very ready for them to go to school, so that would never be one. That was my fourth priority as well. So that didn't surprise me, and that really stayed consistent from last year. In fact, we've asked that question, I think it's three years in a row, and I don't think that order's changed. So that was important information. Two other important we asked about: teacher in-service days, no-school days for students, so they held on federal holidays whenever possible, one being a low priority, five being high, and that's fairly spread out. It was a priority to some and not a priority to others. But if you scroll down one more in the next question, you'll see absolute, not consensus, but it's much closer, when you're talking to parents about teacher in-service days, professional development days, workdays, whatever they are, no-school student day for students are held on either Fridays or Mondays. I think parents pretty much agree, if you're going to need to have a day like that for professional development, please tie it, do it a Monday or Friday, or tie it to a holiday. So that's what we've tried to do and continue that, and we take that feedback. There were a lot of comments. We asked for comments as well. I didn't include all of the comments, but I'll tell you, the majority of them were thanking us for our work on the calendar. There were a lot of calendars positive, it's fairly friendly. We know you're trying the best you can to make it friendly. Lots of positive comments on there, along with some suggestions. You'll know this year, our Parent Teacher Conference was around Halloween, so a lot of comments noted that they appreciated that the students were off, and then parent teacher conferences happened on Halloween but were done by four, and then everyone was able to be at home, take the young ones out trick-or-treating if they wanted. We really looked at another opportunity to do that on our calendar again this year. That was very popular, I think it'll be even more popular, in the way we've tried to structure it for next year, so we'll show you that in just a second. Just to make you aware, we also sent those two draft calendars out to all the staff, Calendar One being the reciprocal and Calendar Two being the split conferences. Calendar One, actually, the reciprocal received 56% out of the 376 staff. You know, we have over 800 staff members, 376 took the survey, so under half, but 56% of those thought Calendar One, the reciprocal, would be one they prefer, and 44% thought the split conferences. We also asked them about the pre-service days. Those are the days before school, so our students come back on that Wednesday, those five or four days prior to that where teachers get professional development and workdays. Did they prefer four or five, or did they not have an opinion? So on that, 38% preferred the five that we have now, 41% preferred four, and 21% said they didn't mind either one, and they had no opinion, it was not applicable to them. So that was very close. So Team Ray Peck took all of that information. I think it's also important to note that Team Ray Peck, PDC, the calendar subcommittee, and for those of you that serve on multiple of those committees, we have a lot of in-depth conversations. It is very hard to explain all the intricacies of a calendar on a staff survey. Even in talking to my groups about the survey, some of them said, "Well, you had too much descriptor, it was too much to read." Well, then some of them said it wasn't described enough because you needed to go into greater detail. It's almost impossible to find that. We do the best we can. Team Ray Peck looked at this, and when they voted, I think they looked at all the information that they had, and they voted pretty overwhelmingly to support Calendar Two, the split conferences. So 72% of Team Ray Peck respondents voted for Calendar Two and 28% voted for Calendar One. I've made it very clear to all our subcommittees, to our PDC group, that Team Ray Peck makes the final recommendation, and all the other items are eliciting feedback for that, the parent survey, the staff survey, because Team Ray Peck really is responsible for selecting these things. On the pre-service days, it was a little closer. 56% selected five pre-service days and 44% selected four. So if, for show you want to go back to the actual, oh, she already has, some of the calendar highlights that we'll show, and we can always ask questions as we get closer, or we get to the action portion of it. So our highlights on this calendar, you'll notice that it's the 185 teacher contract days, 172 student contact days, student attendance days, that's the same as this year and the years past. That wasn't any change with that. Starting on the 14th, that is become a pretty standard, starting on a Wednesday. Looking at it, the biggest change you'll see in October. So looking in October, you will see October 2nd, 3rd as high school, that is 9/12 parent teacher conferences, those two evenings. Moving it closer to when that six-week grading period window is, a lot of the teachers believed that they had enough information and they needed to catch the high school kids sooner and earlier, and then the elementary staff and the middle school staff, they needed more data, they needed a little more time, which made sense. We've been talking about attempting to do split conferences for a long time. I think Team Ray Peck just believed now is the time. So I think this calendar works very well to do that. The 2nd, 3rd, the 4th would be a professional development day for all staff, just because we didn't want the high school to have to spend two evenings and then come back in and teach kids all day again on a Friday, so we could use that. We needed that professional development day there anyways. We thought that would work perfectly. And then you'll see the 29th, 30th, and 31st. So elementary and middle school would have conferences on the evening of the 29th and 30th, then on the 31st, they would have a short period of conferences, probably five hours, maybe 11 to 4, maybe 10 to 3, somewhere in there in that timeframe, and then all staff would be off. Kids would be able, kids would already be at home, but staff could go home, be with their families as well on Halloween, and then that works out then that November 1st is the day off that all staff are off, or our teaching staff are off, and students are off. So the day after Halloween, we have a day that you're able to stay home. It's really nice at the elementary level and even the middle school level, honestly, that you don't have to fight that candy battle the next day. It really is truly nice, that sounds funny, but it's actually true. We're not going to be able to do that forever as the calendar, but while we can, we thought about taking advantage of that, we thought this would be the year to try the split conferences. Other talking points, two-week winter break remains, continue the week-long spring break, continuation of our snow makeup days, that's popular with our parents, they appreciate those efforts. I think our kids don't like it when it's happening and they're having, but then that it doesn't extend into summer as much, they appreciate that as well, too, so I think that's a good thing. Good Friday continues to be a day off for students and staff, and we'll end our year with our students out before Memorial Day, which is our number-one priority with our families. So those are the highlights. This is the public hearing portion, we can definitely talk about it more in the actual action when we vote on the calendar, so.
Thank you, Dr. Volker. Do we have any public input? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to informational items. The foundation update from Mrs. Houston.
Thank you for having me this evening. I was just going to give you some updates of what's happening in the foundation. There's some great things going on. First of all, our mission is to enhance educational opportunities for the benefits of students, staff, and the community. With CAN, our backpack program, we're currently serving a little over 150 students, and we have pantries in the middle school and the high school and at the academy. Our community food drive is the week of February 11th. On the alumni part, we're getting ready to open up the Distinguished Alumni Award. We'll be hearing about that more soon. Retiree luncheon is April 17th. If you know of any retirees that have retired from Ray Peck, we would love to have them join us. We did that in the fall, it was a great turnout, they're all excited, they want to do it again, and they're inviting all their friends, so we're glad. Major saver cards go on sale February 21st, and that is elementary through middle schools, junior high. The annual walk is May 3rd at Rec Park, kind of pretty similar format. Big Brothers Big Sisters was kind of launched the end of last year into this year. We currently have 26 matches with another 34 in process. They're either on the bigs or the littles, but we do have 34 in process, so we're very excited about the momentum of that. We partnered with U-Matter Ray Peck. They're doing some great things. They have several education nights, they hosted one last week, and there's more coming up. I will share with you, the mission of U-Matter Ray Peck is rooted in the need to come together as a community to serve our youth and to remind them that they are loved, cared for, supported, and heard. They're creating a strong presence within the community to serve as a constant reminder that we're all in this together, and they've had a lot of good things going on and lots of momentum in that as well. Today, I got some exciting news. Our payroll deduction started out, when the foundation kind of started, we were about $1,000 a year. 2017, we were at $12,000, and then just in 2018, it's over $19,000, and that's what the staff is giving back to the foundation. That is exciting. And because of generous donors like that, we're able to give back in the way of grants and classroom impact grants, building grants. In the fall, we were able to give $24,500 in building grants. We unveiled that at convocation, and then we're doing $10,000 in impact grants, which was in the fall, and then we're getting ready very soon to give some more out, very, very soon. There's also a big event coming up, hopefully you all receive these in the mail at your home. It's coming together very well, it's our gala, and it is at Centerview. Great food, lots of fun, silent auction, live auction. If you're watching our Facebook, we've had some great things coming in, watch that, we're doing almost daily posts. And then if you'd like to sponsor a table, if you want to come, you want to donate something, see any of the board members here. Kim is leading our efforts, and we would love to have you, it's lots of fun. And again, thank you for all that you do. I have a great volunteer foundation board, and we appreciate the Ray Peck community. Any have questions?
Thank you for all your hard work.
Yes, thank you.
Fun.
Thank you. All right, moving along to Student Intervention Program Review with Dr. Hoffman.
And Dr. Bar.
Okay, just a sidekick. Good evening. So tonight, we are going over the Student Intervention Program Review. Oh, sorry. Our program review team has a variety of people because intervention spans so many different support programs. So we did have Dr. Volker, myself, Dr. Hoffman, Levy Driscoll, the Timber Creek principal, because the English Language Learner Program is housed at her building. We had Melissa Darby and Allison Scott, our two behavior interventionists, Sarah Hamef and Charlene White, our ELL teachers, and then Benjamin Sheldon and Tori Wellman, our LEAP teachers, which is on the other side of intervention, that enrichment side of it. So that's our committee group. As far as program highlights, we do have a district-wide, what's called multi-tiered system of support for our students, or we like to call MTSS, and this is kind of structures that we put in place to help students with both their academic behavior or even their social-emotional needs on as individual a basis as we can make it. Our intervention programs do include a lot of data-driven decision-making, and so we do a universal screening, K-12, three times a year, and that is, we do that with NWEA at all of our levels. We have building-wide behavior and discipline data that's at least at a monthly analysis, sometimes more, depending on the size of the building, to get a scope of what's kind of happening at a bigger picture. We do have systematic progress monitoring, so in between those universal screenings that are happening in September, December, and April, we're progress monitoring internally with our own assessments to make sure that we're seeing what the progress is going to be, so that those universal screenings aren't necessarily a surprise, but more a development of kind of where our students are going. And we do have tiered interventions within each building, so each building has their MTSS structure that's very personalized to the needs of their students and the structure of their building. We also have supportive structures, and we have a district MTSS lead team, and that includes some of us from academic services, and includes our behavior interventionists and our mental health professionals, and their job, that team's job, is to look district-wide, what are our systems, and what can we see as strengths, what can we see as challenges and things we need to kind of improve and hone up on. Each building does have what's called student assistance teams, depending on the building, that some of them call SAT, which is often for just academic needs, BSAT, which is often for behavior needs, the high school calls theirs CARES, and so, but they all do the same thing. They're all having students refer to them based on data to look at these students who need more than just what we can provide support for in just a regular classroom setting. We have the focus facilitators, our counselors, our behavior interventionists, or mental health professionals, which are all great supports for students depending on their level of need. Each student that has a plan, it's very individualized. We do use a common template, however, what's in there for supports is very much based on the student and their data that we're seeing, so that we can really make sure that those interventions are specific to that child's needs. We have common data grids at the K-8 level, so that they're looking at common data across the board, so buildings can kind of see where they are in comparison with others, and if one building's really knocking something out of the park, you can say, "Hey, what are you doing, and maybe what can we do in our building to kind of change it up?" And then we do have LEAP, or our gifted teachers, and our English language teachers, as well as reading interventionist teacher associates, and that core reading and math teachers at different levels to support students who need more academic support. Our previous goals was by the fall of 2018, our average score on the professional learning community's rubric would be a 2.75. Our district average was a 3.02, based on our scorecard in December of 2017. We are noting that Missouri PLC is kind of changing, they're evolving really in their program, and so instead of focusing on PLCs in the future, they are going to focus on Missouri model districts, which is actually focusing on MTSS structure, and so we'll be moving with them hopefully in that. It kind of flows nicely as the next step after you've got your PLC structures in place is to move to your tiered systems of support. The goal two was by the end of the 17-18 school year, percentage of students who spent 10-plus hours out of class and achieved the predicted NWA RIT score, growth will increase to 60%. I will say, for these next two goals, we are better now at tracking the data on who's actually out for 10-plus hours than we probably were two years ago. So for example, two years ago, if the focus facilitator was absent, but a student still was sent somewhere out of class, that data was lost, but we've honed that up, that's all sewn up now, and so if a student's out, no matter what, focus facility are there or not, we've captured it. So we believe we have a better handle on what those kids, who those kids are who are really out 10-plus hours. We also have much more familiarity with the NWEA. It was brand new when we did our last program review, and so we were setting our goals based on the best information we had. We definitely are more familiar with the NWA test than we are now. With that said, for goal two, 41% of our students who are out of class 10-plus hours did meet their personal growth goal. We also tabulated data on how many of our students had scored average or higher, and that was 54%, so they either met their goal and/or achieved average or higher, which is still pretty good to have for a student who's dealing with those kind of behavior and social-emotional issues that we have to skill-build. Goal three, by the end of the 17-18 school year, percentage of students who have that 10-plus hours out of class will achieve the predicted NWA reading RIT growth, and that will increase to 60%. Our results show that we have 35% students who met that growth goal, but we have 53 who either met that goal or achieved average or higher on that particular assessment.
Quick question, when you say 10 hours out of class, is that for the whole year, or?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Michelle, can you move it back a slide for me? All right, the next three goals actually refer to perceptual data from our LEAP survey that we administer annually to parents and to students in the program. So the goal number four is that by the end of the 18-19 school year, and we, the percentage of students indicating participation in the gifted program helps them feel excited about learning, because we feel like that's, we want our students in any facet of our programming to feel that way. In our gifted program, we are measuring that as well, will increase from 59%, which was the baseline the year before, to 65%. On this goal, our student results remained exactly even, so definitely an area we'll continue to monitor, and you're going to see that show up a little bit later. The goals five and six, very similar in the sense that they stayed about the same. By the end of the 18-19 school year, percentage of parents, in this case, indicating that participation of their child in our gifted program provides their child with opportunities to learn to cope with common social and emotional concerns that maybe gifted students could experience, would increase from 55 to 65%. Again, it remained at 55%. We did note, as we were analyzing that in our team, that 23% of our parents said, "Well, I don't know," as their response, so we may have an opportunity there to better connect with our families and kind of engage them in that conversation, an opportunity for improvement for sure. And then goal six, by the end of the school year, again, the percentage of students, again this time, indicating that participation in our program helps them to learn how to handle when things feel tough or when they have problems with peers, so it's kind of a companion question to the parent version you saw in goal five. We set that as a team to increase from 53% to 65, and again, it remained at 53%. And we will note that we had 45 more participants in the survey this year, and we always want to get as many included in that as possible. We feel like that gives us the best amount of, or best information then to build our goals upon. All right, so our scorecard. We have five measures that the team determined to place on here to monitor our programs that are included in student interventions. So the first refers to our English learners, as does the second. We're going to monitor the percentage of our students in the EL program who improve their access, which is that language proficiency assessment that they take annually on their raw test score. Right now, the baseline is 93%, which is really high, and we're really pleased, we're never done with that one or two students that didn't, but we're going to continue to monitor that. Then the percentage of that, of our EL students who improve their percentile rank from fall to winter on the NWA reading assessment, we would like to see that grow, the baseline is 52%. And then similarly, I'm sorry, moving on to LEAP, then for the percentage of our students indicating that the program makes them feel excited, we're going to continue that forward. We really want to monitor that and see that grow beyond that 59% that maintained two years in a row, so we're going to do some things to kind of target that. And then percentage of students receiving Tier Three behavioral support is goal four, or measure four. We want to see them improve their percentile rank on the NWA reading assessment. The baseline right now is 50%, who showed that growth from fall to winter, so we want to see more than just that, show that growth, even though they're out for some of our most significant social and emotional behavioral skill-building, we still believe that we can continue to really see that, more of our students grow in the reading area. And then goal five, or sorry, measure five is very similar, and it focuses on math. Again, for students who are receiving Tier Three, the higher level of supports and skill groups related to those social, emotional, behavioral goals, that those students would also improve their math results. Right now, that baseline is 38% of our students improved from fall to winter. So from those, our committee put together four goals for the, to monitor going forward. The first two you'll see reflect that Tier Three, the students who have Tier Three behavioral support plans. Again, we'd like to see them improve their percentile in reading. The second goal would be in math, by 6% each. We feel like even though, again, it's definitely a need, that we want to continue to build their ability and capacity to reach those typical behavioral abilities to be able to access class and whatnot, but we know that socially and emotionally, we've got to start there sometimes first. We still believe that we want to, we can see them grow in their reading and their math areas as well on NWA. So we're going to measure that by those who improve their percentile and/or score at or above that 50th percentile in reading or math, which would be average. Then on goal three, by winter of the 2019-2020 school year, the percentage of students receiving English language services will improve their percentile in reading and/or their score at, or above, or and/or score at or above 50th percentile as measured by the NWA will also increase by 6%. will improve their percentile in reading and/or their score at or above, or and/or score at or above 50th percentile as measured by the NWA will also increase by 6%. And then our last goal is focusing on LEAP, again, that survey we mentioned earlier. By winter of the 2019, 2020 school year, the percentage of those students indicating participation in the gifted program helps them feel excited about learning. We would like to see that increase from 59% to 65%. All right, do you have any questions?
On the gifted program, where it talks about students addressing the social and emotional concerns, is that a specific target that the counselors come in and work with them on? How is that addressed?
And I think that's been a point of some conversation. That may actually be more in the building, the counselor realm of things. It may not necessarily be an area in which the LEAP teachers are targeting or best suited to target, but definitely something that they think is important to just be aware of. So that is a continued survey goal that we choose to keep on there and monitor.
Do you know what percentage of students we had respond to the survey in parents, what percentage of parents we had responded regarding the gifted program?
Yes.
Sorry, we had 175 students and 108 parents.
How many students are in the program, do you know?
Yes, I think.
So a high percentage.
Yes, a high percentage. And we do monitor that. That's that increase of 45 I mentioned earlier. We really do want to make sure we have a good, a good return rate, knowing everyone isn't always, are always going to respond to us.
Does that capture age group that responded as far as students?
I believe we have grade levels in that data.
Maybe increased over time, the more engaged they were in the LEAP program, the more excited they were about it. As opposed to, this is my first year, I'm kind of overwhelmed, and right now, I'm not real excited about it. So is there that kind of different difference in liking it or opposed to not?
Well, what I can tell you is we captured grade span, so two through five is one option for parents to choose what grade their child is in. And then grade six through eight is an option. I don't believe we capture that similarly for.
We don't necessarily know when it's their first year.
Students, correct.
They might enter in second grade, they might enter in sixth.
Right, yeah. And we we appreciate that about our process. Every year, we survey, and we have students who move in or students who newly qualify for whatever reason. So that's definitely something we can ask.
Is this your first year, second year, third year in the program? That is interesting information, possibly something we could do in the future to deceive the longer you are in the program, are you more satisfied with it? Do you feel comfortable with it? I think that might be a good addition.
Do the students have an opportunity to comment on why they felt the way that they felt in regards to these questions, the questions on the survey?
No, I don't believe we do comment.
I just, I think it'd be interesting to know for them to be able to kind of either give suggestions of things that would make them feel more included or what, you know, about the participation and what would be more exciting to them or what things that they enjoyed.
Absolutely, I've got that note down as well.
Has our numbers continued to increase in the LEAP program, even since we've restructured everything?
As far as students who are, yes. Yep, yes, they have.
Are you seeing a significant increase in just number of students with the tier three behavioral challenges?
That's a great question. I'd say over the years, yes, the number of students in my career, for example, that have exhibited in our classrooms or in our schools higher levels of behavioral or social and emotional needs, yes, I've seen that increase over my career.
I would say at the secondary level, that's MTSS is still fairly new. You find it really common at the elementary level, somewhat common at the middle level, and pretty scarce at the high school level. So I, we're still building those tier three plans. At the middle school, I see we are seeing some increases. At the high school, we're just now learning how to really develop those solid tier two and tier three plans. So I think we'll have better feel of that in a couple of years after our secondary's really had a chance to dig in. And especially with the possibility of participating with the Missouri model district, and they would help us bolster that MTSS process, because it's like a little bit of a different monster at the at the secondary level, just because of credits and changing classes and some things like that. So I do, my gut says it's a little up, but I could not give you some hard data yet.
Are most of the schools pretty consistent with numbers of kids in each school that are in these programs?
I actually included a bit of that information anticipating you might ask in our supporting document. And I'd say there's relative similarity among many of them, but there are some in some locations that may stand out. We monitor that every, not just every month, but formally every month, so sometimes that changes. Speaking of those tier three plans and the MTSS system, we're constantly growing and evolving, and I think we've really learned some great and effective things in order to identify a student's particular need, why are they struggling in that way, what can we do about it? And so sometimes after two or three months of interventions, we really do see an improvement through that planning and analysis with our with our staff. So those numbers can fluctuate some. So what was true for one building in in September may look very different by December. That's kind of helpful information, but this is as of December in in the supporting document.
Are you doing any support for the teachers with the added work and documentation and stuff that they have to do? Is there any kind of support that they get in these programs?
I would say part of what we've done is improve how we do it. So in that sense, the effectiveness is, we're more likely to see it at work with kids. Does that make sense? So I don't know that necessarily it's additional.
I think maybe the way we're utilizing supports and resources that we have is a little different. So for instance, common templates, which seem like a really easy thing, but super hard. We're kind of there now, so teachers don't have to look at plans that look drastically different, maybe some of the skill buildings differ, but the overall plan, oh, yes, that's a tier two plan, I see that. We also have our behavior interventionists, because we have one at the elementary and one at the secondary. Instead of kind of splitting up all the different buildings, they attend a lot of the SAT meetings and sit down with the team and kind of discuss how are we going to do it? They do some of the drafting of the plans, and so they kind of offer that support. So it's not just the teacher team on their own going, ooh, I don't know. They have some support. And I know our mental health professionals are also sitting in on some of those as well to to give some of that advice and then check on the fidelity. So we do have that, I think, happening a lot more intensely than we did in the past.
Thank you.
On page four, where you have the goals, and it's talking about students who spend 10-plus hours out of class. I just had a question to clarify that. So at the bottom, the footnote says, students who spent 10-plus hours outside the classroom receiving social, emotional, and behavioral supports. So that's the group that we're capturing and monitoring. Does that 10 hours include the inter, is the intervention social, emotional, and behavioral? Or where's the reading and math intervention? I know it's circular and you have, you work with one and then the other, but does the 10 hours capture the learning intervention? Or is the 10 hours the behavioral intervention?
That is only the behavioral intervention, so.
And are we tracking the learning intervention as well?
We have in every building a schedule, yes, of who who qualifies, how long they go for, when they go for, what they're receiving. So yes, absolutely in that way. And there's progress monitoring. It looks a little different as to far as what the tool is that does that. But we monitor specific to each child's goal within that group, and they meet monthly, I would say, or if not more often, on how each individual child is progressing academically. So absolutely, that is being monitored, both schedule and time out of class, but also.
And you're looking at correlations with those two things, I would imagine.
Is the 10 hours including like reactive, like if the student does something? Is it including any proactive thing? It's both? Okay.
I know when we were at seven, eight in our buildings, we had a seventh grade counselor and an eighth grade counselor. Do we have a sixth grade counselor for each building now that we've added another grade into there? Because I know they deal with a lot of these issues as a counselor.
Still only have two counselors per building. However, neither building is as big as it was when it was just East. So the overall student population, the caseload for each counselor is is less. And they stay with their students for all three years, so they've got that three-year continuum of relationship.
In next year's presentation, or if you all have time in the next few months, I think it would be interesting to see, and it's kind of one of the questions that was asked. We have this data on the 10 hours. Could we get a total? Did we go from 1,000 hours last year to 2,000 hours this year? What is the total of all these 10-plus hour students? Total time for this group, and could we look at that over time? Because that goes through the question, we asked, is it increasing? Well, if the total of all these used to be 2,000 and now it's 10,000, that would tell us something.
Absolutely, we'll make a note.
There was one thing I wanted to add that Michelle reminded me to say, and I forgot. We do need to do a shout out for Raymore, or I'm sorry, Timber Creek Elementary. They do house our EL program. They have ranked in the top 5% performance for two years in a row. They are only one of five schools in the state who have done this two years in a row. And the state's only looked at this information two years in a row, so we're batting 100%. And Desi is actually coming to do a site visit on March 4th to actually see our program and figure out what is making it work so that they can help other districts emulate that. So I apologize for forgetting that earlier, but they definitely deserve credit for that.
Well, thank you guys for all your hard work on that. Were there any other questions or comments? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you for your support of these programs.
All right, moving along to our lease refunding.
Joe Kinder with George K. Baum is here this evening to give you the update. Last month, you heard Cindy Bias report out that we were refinancing some leases, and so Joe has the bid results tonight.
Yeah, hey folks, thanks for having me, getting me back here. We had.
Push the button there, get the.
Now, can you hear me? Or is that more for the television audience watching intently at home?
Yes.
I'll try not to put anybody to sleep. It's good to be back. We're here talking about a lease refunding. You know, I know when we're talking about saving $40,000 a year, saving, that's kind of bending over and picking up pennies, so to speak, when you're working on an $80 million budget. But as Greg Bricker, who's one of my former partners and most of you know well, would say, I'll bend over and pick up pennies all day long. So we're here to talk about going in and saving a little bit of money for the district and helping operating dollars and capital dollars so that those dollars are flowing directly back to kids as opposed to the fund three siloed dollars. So we had a good result, good sale today. We only had two bids, and if you've got questions as to why that is, we can enlighten you. But the good news is, when you're talking about a difference, a cover bid of 22,000ths of a percent, you know that you were in the market. And we felt from our syndication desk, who can't participate, because we have a role as municipal advisor, felt like those rates were very good. So we had a good sale and a good result. This first page, talking numbers, there's a, I think it's a seven or eight page pack, and we're just going to cover a couple of pages of these. But you've probably seen this before many times, a debt service comparison, that table at the top is kind of the key to, hey, what kind of money are we saving? And the three columns on the right are going to be the most important columns. The one on the far right, of course, is netting out. The other two, the one, three columns in from the right, net new D slash S, that's what you will be paying now that you've gone out and sought bids and lowered your interest rates on two of your outstanding leases. And the next column over to the right, old net D slash S, that's what you were paying or would pay if you didn't do the refunding. And the column on the right nets that out. The line item in 2019, you're not actually saving $311,000. We're actually going in and calling in all of this debt prior to you having a payment being made in March 1st. I think one's March 1st, one's April 1st. But we wanted to make sure that you actually, just go ahead and make that payment. We didn't want to issue debt to refund a payment that you're making anyway in a couple of days, nine days to be exact, from when this thing closes. So that's actually a little bit of a misnomer, because you're actually making a cash contribution to this deal. And so that's not included in this savings, so you kind of have to take $339,000 out. But if you go down, one, two, three, four, five, six lines up from the bottom, there's a number that you see $453,000. That's sort of what you're going to save. This is really interesting, because you have some Build America bonds in here, which are a federal direct pay subsidy. So in other words, you have some taxable bonds that we're refunding to save money, net of a federal subsidy that you receive. But you will still need to go through the process of actually applying for and receiving the subsidy on the payments that you're making this year, or actually coming up for your March 1 and April, I think that's a March, that's the April 1 payment, correct? But anyway, so you actually are kicking in about $26,000 in additional cash that will come right back to you. So if we're really trying to get a savings number, our programs weren't meant to run federal tax subsidy bonds, because that was kind of a one-time deal. So you're actually more saving closer to a half a million dollars, up over $480,000. So nice little deal for the district. Baird was the winning bidder out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. They're actually one of the leading buyers of competitive sales across the country, so it was good that they became involved. Well, I'll just go ahead and tell you in case you have the question. There is some funky stuff going on in the state of Missouri with certificates of participation, which is what this debt is. This is annual appropriation debt. And so every year, you incorporate and make a decision on whether or not to pay this debt in your budget. You cannot encumber future boards to do that. Now they've, your investors, the people that have bought those certificates, do hold property rights to some of your real estate property within the district, so there's an incentive to pay. But you may have heard a story up north about a county where the future airport will sit that has chosen not to appropriate for their certificated debt in Missouri. And so we had a lot of people that have stopped bidding on certificated deals in Missouri as a result of that. They're kind of judging the state as a whole. But in the end, we got a good result, and we got one of the top bidders in the country to come in and bid, and we felt pretty good, but very good about the results. So just as a preview, and again, you know, 22,000ths of a percent difference between the one and the two. I mean, that's what we're always looking at when we look at competitive sales, is how close was the cover? And if you're really close and tight, you know you got a good deal and you're riding along with the market. The next page, page two, if you scroll down a little bit, just shows you where your rates are at. The important column is going to be the yield column. You've got yields on those certificates anywhere from 1.9% up to 3%. Down on the bottom right of the page is the true interest cost. That's the measure that we use to measure the interest rate for the winning bidder, just under 2.75%. So we're talking about going out and borrowing almost $5 million at under 2.75%. So heck of a deal for you all, and really nice result. One other thing that I did want to mention, I told Dr. Montes, I would be quick, and I'm, I have already put everyone at home asleep, I know. So, but Cindy and Dr. Montes got grilled once again by Standard and Poor's. You once again received your double A minus rating, which will put you in the high, high upper echelon among school districts in the state of Missouri, particularly on the west side of the state. If you get outside of the St. Louis metropolitan area, where we're talking districts with, you know, multi-billion dollar assessed values, you're going to be probably one of the top 10 districts in the state, maybe top five in terms of your ratings, so you should feel really good about that. Not only that, but the the feedback we got from Standard and Poor's is that, in fact, your management policies, your budgeting, all that stuff lines you up with a higher rating, actually. And the only thing you're waiting on to get a higher rating upgrade is, number one, that levy that you passed to kind of start working, to start showing that you have those revenues coming in. But number two, it's just strictly a demographic thing. The Standard and Poor's takes and looks across the entire country and kind of breaks out rating grades by what your actual demographics or community are. And so if they were to improve, you would be prime for that upgrade. But that's a credit to you all and a credit to the administration you've put in place and what they're doing. That Standard and Poor's views you that highly, so I commend you on that and your administration as well. So the the action item for this evening is just to go ahead and accept the bid from Baird, who was the winning bidder. And once we have that in place, then we'll go ahead and finalize this thing and get you saving your money.
Any questions? All right, do I hear a motion?
I move that we accept the bid from Baird as proposed.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
All right, moving along to the 2019, 2020 staffing request, Dr. Hatfield.
Good evening. You have seen the memo with some requests that are before you this evening. Just to highlight those a little bit, this is the time of year when we really begin to monitor our enrollment for the upcoming school year. And we have identified some areas that we are going to need some additional FTE in order to have great class sizes for our teachers and to meet our kids' needs. So what we're asking for, the first section is the middle school level. Two additional sixth grade core teachers at East Middle School. One additional seventh grade core teacher at South, as well as an eighth grade teacher at South. You may recall that last year, we added two sixth grade at South. They're going to move on up. So really, we're expanding the seventh and eighth grade by a full team each. We also are requesting a core math teacher. You may recall, I don't recall, remember the month, but we did approve a core math teacher last year to be shared between the two buildings to provide math intervention for students. And that has been a very, it's been a great year. We need, but we need more at each building, so we are requesting to add an additional position. And then we're also asking for an additional fax teacher. That right now, we do share a position between the two buildings as well. We're asking for an additional, so they will each have their own, and that will help significantly with elective class sizes. We're anticipating about a growth of 65 students at the middle level. And that growth can always increase, especially at the middle level, when we've got sixth graders that sometimes enter our district at that age. And then at this time, we're asking for one elementary FTE. This is currently allocated for Bridle Ridge. It will be a first grade section. They have four kindergarten sections, but only three first grades, so we need to add one to keep those first grade numbers manageable. The approximate cost of these new FTE is $420,000. That includes retirement and benefits, but does not include any associated supply costs, set classroom setup, things like that. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I would add a little bit of context there in that typically, we would bring this list to you as part of a larger list in March, and then. this list to you as part of a larger list in March, and then authorize those positions, and then be hiring in April, May, and June. We know the growth is there. We just know by the classes moving up and the pattern that we're already seeing. We were just trying to focus on getting out early with these positions, knowing that we're still going to come back in March and talk to you about some other positions that aren't as evident from a class size perspective, that we still have some choice in the matter. So there's going to be another tier of this coming later. But these, we were confident enough that the class sizes are there. And in just terms of revenue, the additional students will generate state aid to cover nearly all the expense of these particular staff positions just through the growth of the attendance. So.
And we could certainly have waited until March to ask you for these positions, but the hiring time is now. My first big job fair is February 12th. So it's, we get better, more qualified candidates when we can start hiring earlier.
When we, and that makes sense, and thank you. When we get to the point where we're looking at the budget, could you, could we have a brief analysis of just, I forget how the timing works with the funding. So our enrollment's going up, we're adding the staff. When does the money catch up with that? Could you give us that when we start looking at the budget?
Sure, sure.
And how does it compare, the 420 versus the increase? Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve that the 2019-2020 school year proposed staffing additions as stated.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Dr. Hatfield.
Thank you.
Thank you for being proactive for us, too. All right, moving along to career enhancement grants. Dr. Barr, welcome back.
Good evening again. As you may recall, at an earlier board work session, I did speak to you about the further expansion of High School Project Lead the Way offerings. And so tonight, I come to you asking for approval for the career enhancement grant that will help pay for the implementation of these new courses. Cybersecurity is the second Project Lead the Way Computer Science course we'll be offering next year. And it focuses on having students play, role-play as cybersecurity experts. And so they study personal security, system security, network security, which is very important, because according to Project Lead the Way, over half the nation has been hacked in the last 12 months. So lots of job security, if you want to get into that. Medical interventions is the third biomedical course that we will be offering next year. Students will investigate a variety of interventions that are involved in the prevention, diagnosis, and treatment of disease as they follow the lives of a fictitious family. And so there are exposed interventions related to immunology, surgery, genetics, pharmacology, and diagnostics. Units include how to fight infection, and how to screen your genes, how to conquer cancer, and how to prevail when organs fail. The medical industry in Kansas City is one of those where there are more jobs and people qualified. So this is definitely what we would consider a hot industry. Both of these courses definitely will help prepare students and lay the groundwork for them to enter into high priority job markets in the Kansas City area or elsewhere. I will say that in the earlier work session, I had mentioned engineering, design, and development. The high school, in particular, that Project Lead the Way teacher has asked that we delay that one year. And the reason is, is that when we offered computer-integrated manufacturing this year, many students went straight from intro to engineering design to computer-integrated manufacturing, skipped Principles of Engineering. They have to take Principles of Engineering before engineering, design, and development. So next year, all those kids can take POE, as we call it. And so the following year, if we offer EDD, then they'll be ready, which is not a bad idea. POE has a lot of heavy math skills, and this gives kids an extra year to develop that. The grant reimbursement is either 75 or 50%, depending on the item requested. For example, equipment over $1,000 is typically reimbursed at 75%. Supplies that cost below that are typically reimbursed at 50. In particular, this grant looks at instructor training, software licenses, student computers, laptops and tablets, and then supplies for medical interventions such as a lab incubator, a light transluminator, and a digital water bath. I don't know what any of those do, but they sound great. Estimated expenditures is $76,105. The estimated reimbursement is $51,139.75. I will say, typically, we do have a slight cut in the reimbursement as the state tries to even out all the different grants. So typically, it's between a 6% or 10% cut. We can still implement the program. We just do it out of the curriculum supply budget. So it won't prevent anything. So with that, I'm asking for approval to submit the career enhancement grant to the state with the purpose of expanding our Project Lead the Way course offerings.
Questions or comments? I'd like to say thank you for all the work you do to get these grants, so that as we're implementing these new programs, it saves us a lot of money. So thank you for all that work. All right, do I have a motion?
A move that we approve the career enhancement grant to be submitted to the state as proposed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Dr. Barr.
Thank you.
All right, now back to the school calendar.
Hello again. It's exciting to follow that. And just hearing the programs that are offered to our students and thinking back to my own, which was a quality high school experience, not having anywhere near the opportunities that the kids these days have. You can't help but be a little jealous of what they are able to do. I know that sounds strange coming from me, so I apologize, but I am a little bit jealous. It's great opportunities for a kid, so it's nice to hear. Okay, in our calendar, just to recap very quickly, our talking points for our calendar for next year that we're proposing, split parent-teacher conferences while keeping them wrapped around Halloween for K8, the two-week winter break that continue the week-long spring break, continuation of our snow makeup structure, Good Friday continues to be a day off for students and staff, and we end our year before Memorial Day, as many of our number one priority in our parent survey. So those are the big key talking points. Are there any other questions about the calendar?
I do just want to say thank you for minimizing the amount of early release days. I feel like it's just, as a parent, it's harder to plan for an early release day. And I think that we just have better instruction in class on full days. So thank you for that.
There are two people in this room that would be okay if we really didn't have any of them.
Well, sitting on, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just, it's, as a former teacher and principal, you struggle sometimes to have a really positive instructional day on those early releases. But it's, we get it, too. Everybody wants to get a head start on the next thing that's happening, so.
It's nice, though. Thank you for that.
Well, and as somebody who sits on Team RAPAC and the Professional Development Committee, lots and lots of discussion has went into these calendars about what the teachers, what works best for them, what the parents want, and just overall. And the PD, you know, talking about what they want to do for that. We want to make sure that we don't have any soul-sucking PD for our teachers out there.
They'll love that you mentioned that. They'll love that.
Had to throw that in there for them.
Right.
You know, there's definitely a lot of discussion that goes into the talks the teachers have about what's truly best for the kids. Of, you know, the conferences, for one thing, you know, balancing when those were going to be and who needed what. So definitely a lot of discussion.
There was a lot of discussion. It really was.
And they're very, very passionate about it. You know, the teachers are truly behind it.
I think having the snow, the makeup days built into the schedule is also fantastic as working in a district that I know we're going to be in June by the time that we get out. So it's nice, and my kids will be out way before me.
I think our staff will see, we're going to have some professional development days at end, but I think they're going to look around at districts that still have students. And then they're going to be, those teachers will be back past ours, and I think they'll appreciate that as well. So.
Absolutely.
Well, and from a legislative standpoint, we as board members can use this survey, you know, because our parents are very adamant they want out before Memorial Day.
Yeah.
While they're trying, they've already introduced legislation this year to make us mandate that we can only start school 10 days before Labor Day. Our parents don't want that. So this gives us another piece of information that we can talk with our legislators about and say, hey, this is what your constituents are wanting.
Multiple years of data have said the same thing.
So, you know, this serves multi-purposes, this information does, so.
Just a quick question, just to clarify before we have a motion. Is there a typo on September?
Let me.
Well, it says the third, is it no school holiday, but it's the first, I mean, it's the second, is the Monday?
The first, oh, hold on, September?
September's second.
It should be second. Yes, it should be second. That third probably didn't, wasn't transposed. My guess is it was the third this year, if we looked. So I apologize for that.
So I'll make a motion to approve the 2019-20 school calendar with that correction.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Thank you for catching that, Kim. All right, all in favor? All opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And thank you to all the teachers who put in all that work and staff.
Oh, yes, there are a lot on both committees and across the district. So thank.
Thank you.
Committee reports.
I wasn't at the wellness committee meeting, but I did get the notes. And in February, they'll kick off the Love Yourself Hydration Challenge. This is an incentive for employees to start drinking more water and understanding the importance of drinking water. Registration will start February 1st, and each participant will receive a tracking card and a special tracking water bottle.
There you go.
And there will be prizes and also building competition that will be involved in this.
The PD committee really starting to focus on next year's calendar, their professional development days, and when they're going to have them, and what they're going to do with them, and making sure they're balanced out of, between district staff and their classrooms. So they're starting to work on that already.
Mental Health Task Works was supposed to meet yesterday, but because of the snow day, they didn't meet. So they'll be meeting next Wednesday. So I'll report on that next month.
All right, any other committee meetings?
I missed the curriculum because I had surgery, so I did not attend that one.
Come on.
You were excused.
Did you bring a note from your mother?
I did.
Okay.
All right, superintendent's report.
It's that time of year, we're accepting applications for Teacher of the Year nominations and Support Staff Employee of the Year nominations. And it's a great time for us to recognize our staff, and I know that's very important to you as board members. So we encourage as many people to get, to think about who they'd want to nominate. We always get great nominations throughout the district. It makes it really hard to pick even the top 10 or the ultimate winner. So, but we encourage that. Next Tuesday night, the high school's having a course planning night, which is really important. When you have all the opportunities that we have for our students, it can be very complicated and overwhelming. So I think our high school's really worked hard the last couple of years to try to get more information into parents' hands. And so that event is next Tuesday evening. And we'd like to see everybody out there. And a lot of special things for the incoming freshmen to really help them with that transition as well, as they prepare to sign up for classes next year. This Saturday is the Polar Plunge, and it looks like it's really going to be a polar plunge this year. I'm really excited about it. And anyhow, if you have not sponsored anyone, you're welcome to sponsor yours truly or anybody else on the team. There's a link in the RP update if you want to, if you want to jump online and support somebody, or just come out and cheer if you want. Mr. O'Neill, you going to be out there?
Oh, yeah.
All right, we'll see you on Saturday. Another thing that's happening this weekend, our 2005 graduate Chase Kaufman, who happens to be the son of one of our board members here, is being inducted into the Missouri Sports Hall of Fame on Sunday. So that's a great accomplishment. Obviously, good support at home was, had a lot to do with that.
It's mom.
Yes. I was, I was thinking that myself. So, and then finally, School Board Recognition Week has changed a little bit on the dates this year. It's February 10th through the 16th. We'll do something at our February board meeting to recognize you as board members, but since we're, we're going to kind of be in-between meetings, I want to just publicly thank you for your service and for what you do to volunteer to support the needs of our students in our district. So thank you for that, and we'll do more recognition later closer to that time. So.
And I would echo thank you to all of our staff who does participate in the Polar Plunge every year. That's an amazing cause that you're jumping in for. So thank you.
Support Special Olympics.
Yeah. All right, calendar events. February 8th is our first Cass County Kids First Breakfast for this session, 7:30 here in the boardroom. February 14th, work session at 6:00 PM. And February 24th, 21st is our next regular board meeting, 6 o'clock closed, 7 o'clock open. Any other board comments? I'm sorry, I skipped over you. I apologize. Any other board comments you would like to make tonight? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Stay warm.
Baby, it's cold outside.